Called earlier to special council meeting for City of East Grand Forks, Tuesday, June 13th, 2017. It's now five o'clock. Executive Assistant, please call. Roll.
Mayor Steve Andor.
Here.
Council President Mark Elstead.
Here.
Council Vice President Chad Russell, Council Members Clarence Vetter.
Here.
Mike Pachivinsky.
Here.
Tim Rehethell.
Here.
Henry Tweeten. Mark Mers.
Present.
Does turn quorum. Number one, scheduled bid lettings. Consider adopting resolution number six seventeen dash zero six dash four two, proving the plans and specifications in order to advertise and forbid for 2015 assessment job number two, concrete paving, Point of Woods Fifth and Sixth additions.
Boo.
Move by Pachivinsky.
Second.
Second by Rehethell. Any discussion or questions? Mr. Emery?
I will point out, we did separate the paving, basically into a proposal one, proposal two. Proposal two is basically about hundred and sixty feet from Brandon Boulevard. So we will receive two separate numbers.
Hi, Sarah Lovejoy, I'm on Brandon Boulevard. Just wondering if it's possible to re-need the project to Point of Woods Fourth and Fifth.
There is no Point of Woods Fourth out there anymore though?
The hundred and fifty one would be.
That's part of Point of Woods Fifth also.
So then the corner lot could be.
Any males have anything for Mr. Emery? Seen none. Roll call please.
Mers?
Yes.
Vetter?
Yes.
Pachivinsky?
Yes.
Rehethell?
Yes.
Tweeten? Elstead?
Yes.
Russell.
Motion is carried. Entertained a motion to adjourn. Move by Tweeten.
Second.
Second by Vetter. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carried. Meeting adjourned. Moving to council work session. Call meeting to order, Tuesday, June 13th, 2017. Please call roll.
Mayor Steve Andor.
Here.
Council President Mark Elstead.
Here.
Council Vice President Chad Russell, Council Members Clarence Vetter.
Here.
Mike Pachivinsky.
Here.
Tim Rehethell.
Here.
Henry Tweeten. Mark Mers.
Present.
Does turn quorum. Number one, updated up north special event. Justin, you want to kind of give everybody an update, what's going on?
Yeah, yep.
Also, I did talk to Mr. Stordahl. I know you talked to Chief Headlin about Fourth Street closing. They're going to have to with Mindot.
Check into that?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, so last time we were here, we talked about the proposal of the event in itself, basically going to be music slash amateur rib competition slash craft beer showcase. So if anybody's familiar with beer and bacon and/or Fargo Rib Fest, basically bringing both of those together as a one-day event. The idea is to start at twelve noon with kids' games and just kind of door opening and we'll have some eggs games and some of that stuff out there for people to do. Rib competition will start right away in the morning with the cooking between seven thirty and eight thirty. We won't start serving any food until about 2:00 PM. So the samples will start from two to five, and it's going to be a pit master style rib competition. So we'll have a six-person panel that will decide who wins. Hardware Hank has donated a Louisiana LG nine hundred grill, or smoker, to be given away to the winner of the competition. We're going to do gift certificates for runner-up and then a People's Choice Award as well. So during the day, we'll have the kids' games going on, rib competition, the food. We'll have music starting at 1:00 PM. And then the craft beer showcase will start at three, and it'll be very similar to what we saw at Beer and Bacon Festival, where little one-out samples will have eight breweries that are going to be onsite with that. They'll all bring their own ten-by-ten tent, serve out of their own tent, and that'll go till 6:00 PM. So at 6:30, we'll start the headliner, which are not headliner, I'm sorry, the opener, which will be, coincidentally, my dad's band, they used to be, they used to be big in the area, seventies, eighties, early nineties, and they broke up in about 2005. So they're going to get most of the original band back together, and they're going to, they're going to open up, and just kind of one way that we can make this thing a little bit cheaper is get a little nepotism in there. So then followed by the headliner, Maiden Dixie, based on Minneapolis and Nashville right now, kind of nationally touring, and they'll close it down eight-thirty to ten o'clock. So hopefully, you know, it'll be an all-day event, and this weather we're seeing now won't be what we're seeing in July.
What was the date?
July fifteenth is the date of the event. And I did bring, I laid out, if you want to just take one and pass it along, there should be plenty enough for everybody up here, a copy of, of the Google Maps overhead view of the parking lot. And I did this with the anticipation of Fourth Street being closed. So, and realistically, if it does get shut down, or if the idea of shutting it down doesn't work out, it won't be the end of the world. I mean, I think we have kind of a second phase lined up to where we'll just kind of tweak where some things are at. Jamie Lunskey from HB has been kind of a big help in laying out the layout of the whole parking lot itself, being that he's been involved in these for a long time now. So like I said, the one is going to be the layout of where we anticipate everything going. The second one is a picture of the stage. We've been fortunate enough to get Leisure Land RV, CNH Insurance, Cash Trucking, Bank Forward, Sterling Carpet One. Am I misinjust? Hardware Hank, obviously, Salon Two Two Two, Leighton and the FFW as far as the sponsorship goes. So we tried to keep as many of the sponsors in East Grand Forks as possible. So Happy Harry's is our title sponsor of the event, so it is called Happy Harry's Rockin' Up North Fest. Anything that Happy Harry's puts their name on like that is a good event. So we were happy to see that support from them and realizing the vision that we had. It was pretty much the idea that they've had for about the past five, six years now. So they said that, you know, it was one of those situations where they just didn't have enough resources in town or anybody like us, I guess, to kind of help realize the event itself. So.
They also have a lot of experience, too, with a lot of these events to.
Right.
Make it a, you know, a growing experience for the community.
But they, they do share the vision, and the idea is to get, if we can replicate Fargo Rib Fest, a two or three-day event, that's the idea behind it. And that's exactly what they said, too. That's, that's the vision that they would have for the event itself. So, you know, it's, it's down the road. I think, like we said at the last meeting that we presented, hopefully, we could move this from here to the lot behind the fire hall in the future, which would, that would open us up to be probably as big as we need to be for it. So that's kind of in a nutshell.
Maybe you want to go over what you guys have done already for process, what we, you have for your permits and stuff like that, so everybody's on the same page, because we talked about earlier on the phone.
Yep, yep. We've had a little hiccup in our off-premise catering license, but we got one when I was still working with Alex and Brett at Brew. We got one there, and it was a quick turnaround. It's, it's an easy application to get. But I sent in the application without a couple of supporting certificates that they needed. So after a week or so, I got it back, or sent it again, and realized that we didn't have our hard copy of our restaurant license. So I talked to our final, the guy that did our final inspection, and he had said that he didn't remember if it got sent out or not, because it was sent out by a different facet of the Health Department, which has been kind of funny to work with. But he forwarded my email a couple of days ago, and they, Ferguson Falls got ahold of me today and said that they'll, they'll get it taken care of, and they'll give me a copy of that. So that just has to go to the state with a $300 check, and they'll turn around and tell us we're good to go with the off-premise. But we did get, we did LLC the event as well. So we got some separate insurances for that to make sure that, that the event itself is covered outside of, of up North Pits above. As far as security goes, we're hiring.
Pro-Dog.
Pro-Dog to do security for the event. And then, yeah, really, the other things, the only other things that we were going to ask is for the stage itself, they do need 3,000 gallons of water to make sure that in case of wind, the stage stays where it's supposed to stay. Jamie had the idea, since the fire hydrant goes right on the corner, would there be any way that we could tap into that to make it easier to fill? And then also just solidifying that we were okay to use the power that was available in the parking lot there to power the stage and the music and whatnot.
David, you talked to Water and Light on both aspects of those?
Yes, we will.
You want to?
I can do that.
Do that?
Can I just, one question, too?
Sure.
I guess I haven't been a part of it. Sorry, you might have already answered this question, but have you had any discussions at this point with the FFW and?
Yep, they're kind of co-sponsoring it with us.
Okay.
You know, everything is, is technically under our business, but, you know, they're going to supply employees and whatnot. And we just wanted to make sure that they were involved seeing as we were asking to basically take away all of their parking. So we didn't really want to be bad neighbors in that sense. So, and it just made sense, too, to, middle of summer, you know, you get a little, a little restricted on help with a lot of the college kids. So just having that, that other business to be able to supply some employees.
I have one other question here as well. There's just something I learned in, in some of the previous ones we've done prior to that. Do you have any information or requirements at this point as far as what you need for power and where?
We do. I do have an email that I can forward or get over to whoever needs it, that just discusses exactly what they would need. They said, worst-case scenario, a couple of generators are going to be sufficient, but.
Then on other, other events that I've been involved in, they've, they've been able to bring in temporary power. I don't know all the technical, with the transformer, whatever it is, they can bring in. Other ones that they need to know where it is, and they need to get it secured, because we've had issues where people have tapped it.
So if you want to get that email to Megan.
And that was what Jamie was saying, too. He needed to know exactly, you know, which, which source the power would be coming from, because I think there's two separate boxes out there that, that he said might be it. So.
Mr. Emery?
Maybe you mentioned it to Justin, but have you spoke with Mindot? Are you looking at closing down for it there?
We have not, and that was what, we casually ran into Chad Russell a couple of weeks ago, but we were under the impression that the council was going to check into it, and I think Chad said you guys were under the impression we were going to check into it. Because we just said the last time that it might go a little bit further, since I think Chad was the one that brought up proposing for it. It might go a little bit further with the state, if the city was the one to inquire with it, other than us.
I talked to Mr. Stordahl, and they're going to look into it for us.
Very technical, but if you do need help sampling ribs or anything like that, you could sure give me a call.
We were actually going to ask you if you wanted to judge.
We were going to ask.
We got to find six people to judge this thing, so. We, we were actually going to check and see if, yeah, if we had a couple of council members, or if we had some principals or teachers that wanted to do it.
Chad getting ahold of Brad Barry as well.
He's out recruiting, unfortunately, so.
Well, if you sink low in the pool, give me a call.
Sure, sure. And we did start, we started radio commercials last week, so as far as, as the rib competition itself goes, if anybody knows of anyone, we sign up at Hardware Hank and then at the FFW.
Did see your poster that's out, too.
Yep, yep. We're going to start plastering these up tomorrow. Tickets will go on sale tomorrow. And then, coincidentally, Brandon Buckloo will be on the radio tomorrow, so he wanted to get all the details, so he could shamelessly plug it when he was actually supposed to be there talking about Bonner's Day.
Any males have any questions? Seen none. Appreciate, thanks for coming in.
No problems. Thanks, guys.
And if you want to get that email from Megan and David.
Sure. Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot. Number two, matter of amending transportation plan. Mr. Hogan?
Good evening, Council President, Council Members. A year ago, Mindot approached us needing to amend the transportation plan to bring in two projects that they originally did not anticipate doing anytime soon, back in 2013, when we adopted the plan. Those two projects were a, on US Two, both of them. One was repaving the westbound lane of US Two from Fisher here to East Grand Forks. Fifth Avenue Northeast will be the East Grand Forks termini. The second project is the bridge replacement of the bridge over River Road interchange. A year ago, Mindot was proposing on the westbound lane project to also do a safety feature at the intersection of US Two Business Two. And as a result of that discussion, we went and did a study with Mindot of that intersection and also that area around US Two Business Two, which you are aware of, and came up with three alternative solutions to the safety issue that's there, and those are included in your packet. Those three alternatives would be part of the further project development that's necessary to finalize which one of the three will be done there, and they'll keep the community engaged in that process. The second project was the replacement of the bridge, and a year ago, we discussed with the council and Mindot whether there was desire to do anything else besides replacing a bridge, maybe bringing things back up to all that grade, et cetera. And the decision at that time was, no, we'll just replace the bridge. So in order for Mindot to access federal funds, these two projects need to be a part of the transportation plan that the MPO has. East Grand Forks adopts the transportation plan, so it's a part of the East Grand Forks fabric as well. And we're now at that stage where we'll, we'll seek next week, East Grand Forks formal amendment of the transportation plan to include these two projects. Your planning commission reviewed this at their last meeting, and they're recommending that you guys adopt the amendment.
Any may I have any questions for Mr. Hogan?
Any chance as that overpass, that River Road would be done, that you could regain the merge on, say, as you're headed north, the merge on Highway Two or the merge off again? You know, that was lost with the flood control project. I know that would open up a big kettle of fish, but it would be really convenient if it could be part of a project to somehow bring those back.
Well, there's always a chance. How good of a chance is the question? Right now, it is in 2025, so there's a period of time before they'll get into real project development. It'd be something that the city and the MPO can express to Mindot as we inform them of the approval of this. But I think that was kind of discussed a year ago, a lot of different options, and it's sort of settled on just leaving it as it currently sits, just do what's the bare minimum, that is, replace the structure. And so the dollar amount is pegged at just that type of a project. But there's a chance, and we can communicate that, and it's still several years away, so things can change.
Just part of the conversation. Thanks, sir.
Any males have anything? Seen none, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you. See you next week.
Yep, thank you. Number three, request to file plans and specs for 2016 city project number one, wastewater pond on decommissioning. Mr.?
What are you talking about?
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, these plans and specs are for Phase Two of your wastewater interconnect project. This project would take care of decommissioning the ponds, basically remove of riprap, draining of the ponds, handling onsite bio solids, and essentially pushing in the dykes, grading the site, and basically seeding it. So again, looking to get a bid. Work could start on that project as early as late fall, once they, the city gets the primary pond and secondary pond drained down this fall. We could potentially start work sometime this fall on some of that. So again, just, so looking to file plans, set the bid date for July 20th at 10:00 AM, and then we would just like to get authorization to proceed with advertising of that project. Again, right now, funding for that project would basically be probably a combination of PFA loan, and then you guys are aware that the city is going to be receiving fairly substantial amount of grant money through PFA. So still has to be worked out how the grant dollars are going to be expended, whether if they're going to use part of those for the remaining unexpended dollars for Phase One, and then the balance on Phase Two. Those details are still going to be worked out, but PFA is working through that right now, so.
Mr. Tweeten?
When, when you get done with this, you're going to take the concrete off the walls?
That's correct, yes.
And you're basically going to push them in, right?
That's correct.
And, and what's your timeline on that?
We're looking at probably about a two-year project to get everything completed. So if we get started in 2017, I think our completion, oh, shoot, on the, our completion date is the summer of 2019.
Now, you're going to use part of the lagoon for backup in event that you'd have failure, isn't that right?
We are part of Phase One. We're constructing a 22-acre equalization basin, we're calling it, which will give us about three weeks of storage if anything would happen to the force main between the lift station and Grand Forks. We'd have about three weeks of storage.
Now, the Department of Health will approve this, is that right?
And PCA has approved everything.
PCA has approved it?
Yep.
And if you know, after this is done, how long would it be, the solids that you're pushing clay and dirt over, that this land could be used for any other purpose?
How long?
Yeah.
It's a year or two, I think, Kennedy. I thought in my head, you got to have almost like a cover crop on it before you can put any edible paper.
All right.
Farm land on it.
And would it be your recommendation that the city keep the land rather than sell it?
I guess that's going to be your decision, I guess, when.
Well, if someplace else done it, in the state of Minnesota or North Dakota, do you know?
None that I'm aware of, I guess.
The only reason, I just have one comment on this. The reason for my questioning is the, I think we should keep the land, and I'll tell you why. It's going to be much cheaper for the city in the future, 20, 30, 40 years ago, to start going east. As you keep getting to be longer and longer as a river town, it's more expensive. You're going to have to have another fire station. You're, it's, it increases the expense of a police department, because we have to have backup. The ideal city or village is, is either square or round. And frankly, you can go over to Paris and, and near the Arc de Triomphe, you can see it's just like Spoh's, and they designed Washington DC. But we're, we're going to be much better off going east and be less, less lift stations and less problems all the way along. Now, that's in the future, but we, we've got a plan for the future, because the future comes on you very, very fast, and I, I've, I've seen a lot of it. And matter of fact, I, I think I told you the story. If I haven't, I'll tell you sometime, how the mayor and city council and city attorney just about got killed because of that lagoon? Did I ever tell that story? I'll, I'll. I'll tell you that story next work session. You want to listen, I can do it in about, in about 15, 20 minutes.
Okay. We'll save that, save that for next time.
And I, and I'm the only one living that knows the story. And I expect to be around.
Better have the recorder running when you share it.
Yeah.
All right. Anything else for Mr. Emery on the decommissioning? Mr. Demers?
Thank you, Mr. President. All I ask is, will we get the plans and specs before the meeting?
If you want them, we're still working on them. We'll be, you know, working on them up until next week, but if you want to look at them, you sure can.
I just think if we're going to file something, we should have it. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Seen none. Thank you, sir.
Just a clarify, Mark, I mean, you will definitely have the plans at the meeting.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just want to get them before the meeting, so.
Number four, request to prepare plans and specs for Kennedy Bike Trail connection. Mr. Emery?
Thank you, Mr. President. As part of the Kennedy Bridge project, they are constructing a 10-foot shared-use trail from the Kennedy Bridge down the on-ramp, down to essentially River Road there. And the city is going to be responsible for making that connection back to the Greenway Trails system. So if you've seen it, if you look at the nice map that I put in there, using all my AutoCAD skills, kind of designated there what, what was Mindot's share and then what was city. Mindot's participation in this is, they've agreed that if we basically prepare the plans, they would take care of any construction administration, construction staking, inspection. So essentially, they would do the, when they're building their portion of the shared-use trail, they would just basically connect right to our, the Greenway Trails. So any construction-related type of work, the state would take care of that. So again, right now, I think the city has money in their Greenway fund to do this work. So the biggest thing is we got to get plans completed, submit them actually to the DNR, to kind of get DNR's approval on it also. So that's what we're looking at, is just getting authorization to, I guess, prepare the necessary plans and specs.
Sounds good. Any may I have any questions on that?
I do. Where it says, Mindot has agreed that if the city pays for the trail connection from River Road to the existing bike, the contractor will install the trail as part of their project. So, so does that mean they're going to, are, are we responsible for the construction of the orange section here, or are they going to do the construction of that?
They're going to do the construction of it.
And, and what are we paying for?
Well, let me, you're paying for the, the trail, the connection.
Right.
The materials, everything else. Basically, Mindot is going to handle any construction inspection, construction staking, that type of stuff.
Okay. And that, that part, that orange section from the existing trail to the new trail, is, that's going to be concrete?
That's, right now, what the state has is their 10-foot shared-use path is concrete.
Okay.
So I guess the thought is, I mean, they're going to have their contractor do that, we can probably just keep that concrete.
Okay. Rather than have two separate sets of.
Exactly.
Equipment, okay.
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
Carla?
I just have a question. If we're going to have a project number, so we're doing it out, we know where it is, would it be a project number?
Yes. Yep, we'll create a separate project number.
Mr. Vetter?
Thank you. Mr. Emery, has the state said that's as far as they're going to go is where the yellow ends?
That's approximately where their ponds show stopping right now. Yes.
Because I would push them to come down onto River Road, and the connection from River Road over to the trail would be a lot smaller for us, because they're saying they'll, they'll do it from River Road over. So I would push them to say, if you come down to this point, and we've only got 40 feet rather than whatever, how many feet is on there, I would try to get them to come down on River Road as far as they can.
Okay.
Before we make the connection.
Sure.
Shorten it up.
Yeah, I think the farthest they'll go is probably essentially their property line there, which I think that's really hard to see. But I think it's probably right up in here. So, I mean, they may pay for it up into here, then we, you know.
Okay. Still save us some money.
Yep.
Any males have anything on that? Seen none. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Request for cemetery garage. Mr. London, please?
Thank you. This is essentially the same request that we looked at last year, I think it was in May last year, for a, basically a cold storage two-stall garage onsite at the cemetery, so that our cemetery crew can store their lawn mowers and tractor equipment onsite at the cemetery. Currently, they're driving it daily back and forth from Pacific Center to the cemetery for years, and kind of shuffling, it's two people, so they're kind of shuffling equipment and pickup and bodies back and forth, and playing a little bit of musical chairs on the equipment to be able to get what they need there and back every day. So it takes, of course, a lot of extra hours on the equipment, as well as man-hours morning and at the end of the day, to be able to get that equipment back and forth. So this building would allow them just to store that right onsite. It's a 24-foot by 24-foot. It's a twenty-four foot by twenty-four foot with ten-foot-high walls. The bids from Dan Caribou Construction and GW and Sons, they both bid an option for a two-by-six frame wall, that's the option we would like to go with, and a concrete slab with a ten-foot entry apron. The low bid and the total price for that was, Dan Caribou Construction for the construction side at seventeen thousand seven hundred dollars, which he left at the same as what he bid last year for us. And the concrete construction side would be five thousand dollars, including that ten-foot apron. So all-in for those two would be twenty-two thousand seven hundred dollars. Of course, not included in that is the electrical and building permits, that kinda would come along with it. And the total budgeted price we had for the year was forty-seven thousand dollars for that project.
Mr. Tweeden?
One thing I'd like to say, and that is that the need has existed there for a long period of time. And the, Mr. Larson that's working there is running back and forth, and as Abe Lincoln said in the early eighteen sixties, it's, "Time is the stock in trade of an attorney", and when you're wasting, you've got to relate things to time as far as efficiency. We're running back and forth all the time. You have a person there, we can store everything, it's good for the equipment. There's another consideration there that's important, and that is that they, is that the council in the future get the people from the DAB and VFW working with you as the future development. The question always comes up, there's a special stone for people who've been in the armed forces. That number is continuous because, as the Bible says, there will be wars and future wars, and that's a fact of life. And some of the veterans that I know, they talk to me about it, they're concerned about it. So I think it's important that our local funeral director get together with VF and W and American Legion people in the future. But there's an interesting concept for the history of the cemetery. This cemetery has been designed for eight thousand people, and we can take more land when that comes available. There won't be anybody here, I don't think that will go beyond the needs for another expansion of the cemetery. And, but we, originally, this cemetery was designed with the idea of no monuments. That was the vogue to cut down costs of funerals. Now, you have a whole different ballgame, and if Reed takes and gives you this printout sheet, it tells you the various types of burial, various types of sale of lots, and I hope you'd give that to the administrator and members of the council. But the one thing that we have going, this cemetery is increasing in commitments, in normans, they call it. It's also increasing in sale of lots. There will come a time, we're getting closer to it, where we will be able to set aside money for the future. One of the things that we've got going, and you've gotta look at the entire situation, Memorial Park and Calvary are getting filled up. There are more people who are looking here, especially people from the services. And the other thing that's happening is that a lot of people from Grand Forks, whether they're Catholic or non-Catholic, don't like to move south. One of them is, Calvary is New Deal and Memorial is crowded, and you're gonna see a lot of the vets and legionnaires who live in Grand Forks locate here, plus people in the rural area. And, but there should be good coordination, the city council and the people are involved together with him. So we continue to do the, what should be done to have a first-class cemetery. The other thing I'd like to say, Dr. Gander's father did a very important thing, he got that hard surface in there, concrete, they have a graduated ramp there on the curb, making it easier for people to take the decedent's remains up and where it's gonna be buried. And if you look at other cemeteries around here, one of the things that takes and depreciates the appearance right away is the roads that they have. And it was quite a battle to get this, and I won't go into too much of the time, but I'll be very happy to tell you the history of it, too. But it's definitely an asset, and we've got as nice of a cemetery as anybody in the area. And with that, I'll quit talking.
Mr. Demers?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a quick statement and then a question from Mr. London. I had thought, I believe last year, we entered into an agreement with Good Sam, just to do some storage out there?
I think we entered into that till we determined what we were gonna do.
Right, but what happened with that agreement? Did it not work out, or did, I mean, what were the results of that agreement?
Wasn't aware of any agreement.
Because last year, we talked to Good Sam, they, at that time, I believe, had extra space in their garages. And I thought last year, because as was stated, to drive across town in a tractor or anything, to do that type of work is ridiculous. But if he can do it for something that's cheaper, maybe they have, maybe he can do it for X amount for summer. I just think we should look back and see what happened with that. If it just wasn't feasible, then it wasn't feasible. But there's an opportunity to save forty grand, or however much money, it wasn't forty grand, but it'd be interesting just to see what the outcomes were of that agreement that we had, I believe it was last year, or was it the year before?
I'd like to say one more thing, and we should go six-inch stud after what happened today. There's wind sixty-five, seventy miles an hour way, you better make it a little...
And put a dome on it.
And everybody here should go out and see the VFW building out in the point, and find out how tough that winter was. He can tell you more about it.
I can follow up on that. I know Mr. Dragich and I did speak to Good Sam on that, about using one of their storage areas out there. I, off the top of my head, I can't remember what the problem was on that, but I'll check on that again. I think it had something to do with the, if I remember correctly, the flammable materials that we would be storing in there, they wanted some additional, it's kinda what's ringing a bell in my mind, but I will check on that, I'll get an answer to you on that. But I do remember we did speak to them about that. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything? Yep, thank you, sir. Number six, request for infill rooftop unit replacement, Celeste.
I was informed a month ago that one of our rooftop units, on the second floor, we have additional rooftop units that address only Mike's Pizza, but one of the heat exchanges was cracked, the motor was also failing, and so they had to lock it and lock, take it out, turn it off. That will be unreparable and will have to be replaced. So I requested quotes for that rooftop unit, based on the fact where it's located, they have to rent a crane to put that rooftop unit up there, do some electrical work. The second rooftop unit up there is of the same age as the first one, that has failed and will need some significant repair work in the very near future. So at that point in time, I requested a quote from four different individuals for one rooftop unit, replacing two rooftop units, what the cost of the crane was, and any additional. We received four quotes, one from McFarland, Valandry, Johnson Controls, and Amundson Heating and Cooling. The lowest bid was from McFarland for approximately thirteen thousand. Johnson Controls was second, but they also added some digital thermostats that can be monitored remotely through an app. So I guess my recommendation would be to use one of, to accept one of the two quotes.
I can't say we should go ahead, because we gotta keep building up, so...
So you're saying you are asking us if you wanna go with McFarland?
I would replace both.
Or Johnson Controls, which would do the different thermostats?
Yes.
I guess the question that I have is, I'm not sure if McFarland or Valandry have been up there, to look at the, how the system is actually set up, because the way it's...
Well, Seth walked up both McFarland and Valandry.
And I'm not sure, I'm just no, inside, the, some of the problems that we're actually having on the second floor is the way that the system is set up from the front to the back of the, of the unit, or the space, and without having some type of a thermostat that controls it automatically, what happens right now is, if it gets colder hot on the front in the lobby area, it automatically shuts everything off to the other side. So then the temperature drops there, and then it raises on the front. As soon as it hits the level on the front, it shuts off there, and it converts, so you don't have, you don't have any consistent heating or cooling. And I, and when Johnson Controls does the maintenance now, I believe...
They do some.
When I was talking to Travis, he was looking at some of the thermostat-ing issues and some other blower issues that would, that would resolve some of those issues, you know, concerns. So I don't know if these are apples to apples, you know, this is a five-ton RTU unit.
Well, I had Travis contact Valandry's to let them know what the situation is. So he was actually kind enough to contact both and let them know. Now, Amundson may not know what the situation is, but, but yes, Travis works with, obviously, a number of different companies, whether Johnson Controls provides the rooftop units or not. So he was aware and did contact Valandry's. Now, all three have been up on the roof. I can check with McFarland to see if they could also provide the thermostats before next Tuesday, and then present McFarland or Johnson Controls. But I do know that Valandry's was contacted by Travis personally, so...
And I guess I'm doing it on two respects. One, personally, because I rent the space, and two, the other thing is, it's hard to tell from the bid if the art, you know, it says from, on the, I'll just say on the Johnson Control one, it says they're replacing it with an additional five-ton unit. It doesn't really indicate what the replacement is gonna be on the McFarland unit, you know...
Do you want me to have Billy write it up differently?
I would have, well, just to make sure that they're replacing it with a, with a like...
Well, theirs says a direct replacement unit, so they're replacing the unit with a direct replacement, which means...
I guess I don't have a...
That would mean they're replacing it with the same unit that's currently there, so...
Do we not have a triple lease on this?
Yeah. Perfect.
You won't have to stage these repairs from any adjacent properties, will you?
No, we won't be.
Why do you ask?
But that was the only question.
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess the question I have is, this only addresses the rooftop units, it doesn't address the zone issues, whether you put digital or mechanical thermostats or whatever, you're still gonna have a zone issue, is correct?
Well, apparently, but Ron hasn't informed me of the zone issues up until this meeting, so I could probably, yeah, no, so I could, I could probably go back, yeah, every, I guess every time I bring it up, there's a new issue. So we can certainly go back, and I can have Travis write up all of the issues, and then we can send it to all of the dealers that do rooftop units and come back with something. But, yeah, I was just informed that a rooftop unit needed to be replaced similar. I mean, I guess I wasn't aware that there were zone issues and blower issues and those types of things, so...
And that's what I've been, that's what we've been dealing with for like five years, talking to the people that have been coming back and forth, relaying the information to, I guess, the people that are there. So I guess I haven't directly talked to you, but that's what they've been telling me for the last five years.
Is there a lot of hot air in the law office?
I think it is.
Do you wanna go back and talk to them and ask them what it would take to address these zone issues? We're gonna have to look at it.
Well, we'll bring it back to the next work session, and I'll probably, all four companies speak directly to Ron, since he seems to know the most about it, and then we'll go from there, so... Thank you.
Number seven, discussion Red Lake River Commission finance commitment. Mr. Demers?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll try to be brief, because I might have an allergy issue, so I apologize for lack of clarity when I speak and stuff. So basically, the Red Lake River Corridor Commission has decided that it would be in the best interest of the corridor to go after some funding from Northwest Minnesota Fund. Trying to get twenty-five thousand, or a total of fifty thousand dollars, of which twenty-five thousand would be match from the fund. I've passed out a couple pieces of paper to everybody. One is the pre-proposal that was written up, and, oh, I guess it's all stapled together, but on the very back is the tentative breakout of the contribution match from the various entities. Now, looking at what the possible objections to this would be, I don't foresee them all, but I would imagine there's some that putting in any money into a group that isn't necessarily East Grand Forks gets rid of some of our autonomy or authority over how this money gets spent. And there's also the potential for, you know, that money getting spent in other communities and not in East Grand Forks. I would say there are, those are valid concerns, but what we're trying to do with this project is fund people, basically, to be able to put together and execute projects that are going to, or put together proposals and then execute those proposals for the entirety of the Red Lake Corridor, based solely, or primarily through legacy funding. We put together a proposal last year that came up short, and the primary feedback was that you need to go bigger and think broader. So what we're trying to do is, we've partnered with a couple of different groups to fund some staff. If we came up with this money, it would fund that staff to help put this, this project together, or the list of proposals, and then carry out those proposals over the two-year grant period. I guess the other thing that I think about when I look at the funding part of it is, sometimes you need to invest in order to really engage. I think we've talked a lot about utilizing the rivers, utilizing our green space and our natural environment around the rivers, but we've, a lot of it's been talk, we've kinda just, we haven't executed on a lot of this. And I think with this small investment, it will put some skin into the game from East Grand Forks' perspective. It will, in a sense, force us to actively get into this proposal as active members, not just being led by Crookston or Thief River. not just being led by Crookston or Thief River or whatever, but be, be very engaged. So, excuse me, a couple of the things that we're looking at doing is doing additional wayfinding that has been, I know Mr. Hutton has talked about the need for additional wayfinding along the Greenway Project. And we could leverage this do, not these dollars, these are just for administration, but we could leverage project dollars from the legacy to, to do those at a twenty, twenty percent match, or whatever. It could be ten percent, fifteen, whatever we thought we could best, put our best foot out there, or whatever. It is competitive. So I guess I'd be willing to stand for any questions about it. On the actual funding, it's a little bit confusing. So what, how it's broken up at the Northwest Minnesota Fund, is there's a, a total in-kind that can be applied to it, and what, how we've estimated that is the, the larger cities, Thief River, Crookston, East Grand Forks, all have standing park and rec staffs, larger admin staffs, that we could apply that twenty-one hundred dollars in-kind per year to, just, and what we figured is it's not, it wouldn't be very hard to go through that. We, you know, Reed's already done some pre, pre-grant stuff on, for this grant, so that twenty-one hundred dollars isn't hard. What, what we're really asking for is fifteen hundred dollars per year for fiscal years 2018 and 19, and that would be starting in July of seventeen, would be the start of fiscal seventeen. So we could, we could essentially budget this fifteen hundred dollars into 2018 budget and pay it out January first, and then same thing for 2019, another fifteen hundred dollars paid out. I guess, like I said, I, I really want to, I can stand for any questions, if anybody has any concerns or, or objections. What they really want is a letter of committed, commitment from the city that says, we're willing to put, we're going to commit this many man-hours and this many dollars over those two years to put towards this grant in order to access the twenty-five thousand.
Mayor? If you could, probably we all know generally, but tell us in a minute or so about how the funds would be used.
Um, yeah. So first, first and foremost, the proposal process to the grant, to the, for the legacy funds is a pretty, pretty intense process. So primarily, these funds would be used in putting those, putting that proposal together. Part of the, the problem that we have is, we're an entity, or we're part of a joint powers, that doesn't have any standing staff, or, you know, so to try to do that, there's, it's, it's really taken an act of, it's, it's kind of a miracle that some people have stepped up and really shepherded the process and, and done those things. But what we found, and like I said, we, we put forth a proposal last year, which was doing some access point, or access work in Crookston, some wayfinding dollars. But like they said, their, their primarily response was, it wasn't big enough, it wasn't expensive enough. So this person would be in charge of kind of working on putting that proposal together. Second, secondly, if and when we, if we get it this year, that part of their job would, for the next two years, would be to implement these changes and, and help push these changes along, work on the coordination of them, those type of things. And then plant, start the planning for the next round, because what we've seen with a lot of these legacy projects, they're multi-phased, they're ongoing three, four, five-year projects that you just keep going back, and once you kind of have your rhythm, they, they want to keep investing in these things. So that would be the primary reason. I know there's a portion of what the Red Lake River Corridor Commission is trying to do is do active outreach, coordination of events, promotions, so working with groups, the, the chambers, the, what do you call them, the, you know, the different community event boards, and all those type of things, trying to get, coordinate those and then promote those. So there could be some marketing functions of this money as well, where you're using it for advertising in different, you know, different media, those type of things. That's, that's the gist of it. What are you talking about, twenty-five thousand dollars, well, and, well, twenty-five thousand dollars in cash, plus another twelve thousand or so, so you're looking at thirty-six thousand, thirty-seven thousand in cash, plus the, that doesn't go very far for staff over a two-year period. So, I mean, it's, and we're also tying it to, I forget what the other, there's some Minnesota groups that are, I think it's through the education, so we've got some internship stuff right now that we're leveraging. There was a gal, I forget her name, but she just started, she's kind of starting this process, we've got some money to kind of start it, and then she, hopefully, if we can get this money, leverage it to move her, or make it more semi-permanent, I guess, so. Longer than a minute, sorry.
Mike? I, I absolutely support this. This group started, I believe, post-flood, and they saw, they saw the excitement that was happening with our Greenway and campground and rec area, and wanted to tap into the potential for this being kind of a gateway to Northwest Minnesota and tourism and the natural resource that the river is. So it's a small amount to invest to strengthen this partnership that we have with our neighbors up the river, Thief River Falls, Crookston, and then the smaller communities. So this, this group started out and then kind of went semi-dormant for quite a while, now they're, they've reactivated and had some, some good leadership, and this is a request that I absolutely support, and I think we should enthusiastically get behind it.
I don't know, I was just going to say too, there's, there's quite a bit that I think we should look at as what we can leverage this for. You know, we've had issues that aren't maybe just exactly about accessing the river, but it's, you know, about, you know, Maplewood addition and people on trails out there. Well, if you want to do some things out there to, to get people off the levees and on to pass, well, there's a mile of trail that you could put back there, well, that's pretty spendy, but if you could pay, if you could leverage eighty percent of the cost to legacy for some of that, that's, that could be a pretty good investment, in my opinion. So there's things like that. They've, they've been talking about, you know, the, the access, the boat access on, at the Red Lake River, you know, adding fishing piers, those type of things, even just some things to beautify the Fave Park. All those type of things, anything along that corridor, if you can attach it to it, and you want to come up with a, a match, from what I've seen, this group is looking for ideas to enhance that, that corridor. So, like I said, it's, it doesn't seem, I don't like giving money to groups outside of East Grand Forks more than anyone, or, but I do see it as a good investment tool, and a, a good investment in putting, putting a mo, or some money out there as a marker for us to, to leverage it into, to really accessing more funding for this, for this area.
Does anybody else have anything for Mr. Demers? I see none, sir.
Thank you.
Number eight, preliminary budget discussion. Mr. Demers?
Thank you. I was going to start a little bit here, give a little bit of background and where we're at, and why we brought this forward, and I'll turn it over to Finance Director Anderson to go through some of the information that you have probably before you, regarding where we're at. But remember, we wanted to start the 2018 budget discussion as early as possible, and to incorporate as much council input into the development of the 2018 budget as possible, and to work on some of the guidelines that have been included in our council and chat visiting session. So if you see on the second page there, the top ten items that received the highest percentage of votes are highlighted in yellow, and so number one is plan for projects within the fund balance. And number four is to bring the financial reserves to target. So what you have before you here tonight is where we're at right now, based on what we have from the audits that's, I know they're finishing, they're, but they're starting to put together the final, the final product for bringing to the town, so they have all their information, and they're looking at their audit.
Yep, the comprehensive annual financial report.
So with that, the first item here is the revenue and expenditure summary, which is kind of the first page on our city budget, and what we have there is what our projected expenditures for 2018 are based on our past estimates, or employee costs, is what we have currently scheduled for the capital outlay, and so a couple of things I'd like to just make a note of before we go over to the car, there is the recreation and culture, the parks and recreation there, the additional labor costs, they are still one, one person down, they were a few years ago, you know, we was like, we, we, we don't have that, we don't have that, we should be included in that. Carolyn, do you want to go through what you, I've started the budget.
Okay, so on the general ledger, we have year-end expenses versus budget by fund and department, and this is just the general fund. So on the first page is the revenue, you can see that our revenue is actually, we budgeted nine point six million, we collected eleven, and most of that is in other financing sources. And what happened is that when we did the pool, we decided that we were going to do a sales tax, if the sales tax didn't go through, the general fund dollars would cover the cost of the pool. And so we, when we got the loan from Water and Light, the loan is in the general fund. So we did transfers out of the general fund to pay for the project, for the cost of remodeling the pool. So after the sales tax passed now, speaking with the auditors, we talked about how we could keep it in the general fund, or we could set up a special revenue fund that would have the loan in there, and would have any sales tax we collect. So by doing that, we're going to have a, I'm proj, I'm proposing that we start a special revenue fund for the pool renovation sales tax collection, and that would be Fund 212, and I will bring the resolution to be passed at the next meeting, sorry, this just all came together this week. And so our revenues are up more than our expenses on page two by one point eight million dollars. And like I said, part of that is that we transferred the pool loan out of the general fund, which comes to one point one five eight million dollars. And we also had the savings of seventy-five hundred thousand, seventy-five hundred thousand dollars that we didn't have to move for this year. So that two point one million, it's actually one point nine five six, I believe, is the loan, has actually now been moved from the general fund to Fund 212. And so our fund balance now went up to one point eight million dollars. So if you look at second printout, which says fund balance, general fund, twenty, 2008 to 2017, if you look under 2016, you'll see what the beginning fund balance is, the change in fund balance, and then we have the pool loan that was a transfer in from Fund 212. And so our fund balance is at four point five, which is at forty-four percent. We want it to get to thirty-five percent. So by just having that sales tax pass, that is tremendously helped our down. Any questions on that? Okay, and then David talked about the budget, so I guess that, unless you have questions, that's really all I have on that.
I guess I just wanted to point out that right now, the expenditures that we're showing is six percent over last year, and that's with a couple, with a couple of assumptions. One, we did, we sent this to Terry, we had to do their best in estimating what our labor expenses were going to change next year, the one point I want to make out was the parks and rec, they should change, and then in the capital outlay, you'll see that there's two large changes in that. Public works ended up at fifty dollars, we, the four hundred thousand, changed to five hundred thousand, and recreation and culture went from three thousand, four thousand, which is now thirty thousand, which is forty-three percent. And a portion of that has to do with what we have coming on for our capital improvement project.
Yeah, it actually has to do with the capital improvement plan for 2018. And we just need, we'll need to look at that again to make sure there's items that we don't need on there. For example, in the building maintenance fund, we have replacement of the windows, which, in the library, which we probably, hopefully won't have to do because of the new air system. Reed had to leave because there's, they're taking on water at the DFW because of, if you're looking for Reed.
Okay. I guess that's...
Sorry. If we could go back to the fund balance, general fund, 2008 to 2017, look at line number two, change in fund balance, and that shows the number of years in the last nine that we've dipped into our reserves to try to keep ourselves afloat, and that's five of the last nine. The majority of those years, we actually went negative, is that, am I reading it right? And so we did not set our levy at the, at the place where it needed to be as for our expenditures, and we're going backwards. Well, we know, this is a government that's going to grow a little bit each year, and so that should be on a, kind of a slow, steady build to keep at that thirty-five or so percent or higher. And so I think the goal, in our budgeting process, one of the goals can be, instead of it kind of bouncing up and down and actually going negative some years, we just want to make sure we budget for our expenses, and also to add to the general fund reserves each and every year. So I, it affirms what you all have told me, you know, how you said we had to do these last couple of levees a bit higher, because we'd gotten in a hole for the three years prior, and that matches up exactly with what the numbers say. So thank you to these last couple of years of councils that have replenished those reserves to the point where they are, and appreciate it. I think it's going to make a good way forward, pretty solid.
Mr. Demers?
Thank you, Mr. President.
I guess one of the things I'd like to see, and I had a brief conversation with the mayor, and I think he agrees, and I'd ask the administrator whether or not, what the best way forward, or what the appropriateness of doing this would be, is, you know, what we traditionally do in budgeting has been to predict the next year, you know, the next year's budget, and say, this is what we're doing, except for basically capital, you know, we've kind of gone out a few years with capital. But wondering what, what our ability and, you know, the potential appropriateness of having a, an additional budget resolution after the required budget resolutions that says, this is our five-year, maybe not plan, but goals for levy, for all these things, and project out what we think, you know, obviously, the further you go into the future, the more, you know, the, the less certainty you have. But I think it's a good exercise for us, because, you know, budgets are supposed to be kind of recurring, you know, and I think they're just not meant, you don't do a one month budget for yourself, you're supposed to do it, it's your continuing for this year and the next year. And we, we certainly go next year and revisit it and, and update it, and then do another five-year plan or ten-year, I don't know how far council would be willing to go, but I just think part of what we need to do, or what it would help, is for us to communicate to folks, businesses in the city, this is our plan. You know, if you have things where, yeah, you have to raise your, your levy X percent, this is Y, but here's the five-year, here's our goal for five years, and, and put that out there, accounting for more than just capital, accounting for labor, accounting for as many things as we... things as we can count for, understanding that, like I said, certainty is certain, certainly fuzzier as we go out. But just wondering what the council's opinion about doing that, what the administrator's idea of what time and resource it would take, and if it's appropriate to, at the budget, you know, at the final budget, have an additional resolution that outlines that, that five-year budget or something like that. Thank you.
And I could speak to that. I, I would support that type of idea. I think that only adds to the strength of the ability of what our budgeting process is. As far as the time commitment for staff to put something like that together, I don't know that it would be overly that extensive, based that we got a lot of the groundwork done, as long as we can agree that the items that are highlighted based off our visiting session are what we agreed to want to try to implement in the future. It'll take some staff time, but I wouldn't say not an overly excessive amount of staff time to kind of put together what it might take to implement these items that have been identified and then put them into a, into the plan. So, I think that's, in my opinion, I think it's definitely a doable situation. I think it's probably something that would have some benefit to it.
One follow-up for you, or even Carla, what horizon do you think would be most effective? Is it five, seven, ten?
This is something I've always wanted to do.
I'm just.
Right, exactly. And I guess when I'm thinking of this, I'm thinking, I mean, one thing we could easily build in for that five-year plan is, is a salary number. You know, this is what we have to have every year, look at what the past was in percentages, and, you know, basically, this is what the increase in salaries is every year, and I know we did that in other years just so that we could see what it was. And that's probably the, you know, ninety-five percent of our expenses are in salaries, and that's really, that's all that's predictable, when you think about it, because other things come up. And if we have a capital outlay plan, then that covers most everything, I think. So, you know, I'll look at what we have, basically, increase in salaries every year and see what the trend is, and see if Terry can kind of even figure that out for 2019, and that might give us a start.
I would suggest that we do it, I think five years is fine, but I think we would focus, our primary focus would be on three years.
Okay.
We would probably have a better number at three, but it's a little bit more fuzzy beyond that.
One thing we agreed in our conversation is we cannot obligate future councils, but we're just setting a mark today that we can sort of set ourselves for that trajectory.
Do you have any questions? Let's start on it. Since we get to the auto act, and we'll get to all that, we'll get to that information. I can start even getting some of the costs for the items that are in here.
I would encourage every one of us to drop an email now to our elected officials, our legislators, Governor Dayton. The solid place that we are, this little improvement that we just saw, this, where the pool comes back into our bottom line, that puts us on good, solid ground, and that was a hard battle. You know, when we were down there working with them, all of us together in the early part of the year, they felt like they were going to have a little bit of an uphill climb on some of these things, even across the governor's desk. So, I did drop Governor Dayton an email and thank him for signing our bonding bill in particular, and I think it'd be good, you know, we get to our legislators and our governor when we need something from them, but when they deliver something very beneficial to us, a little note of thank you is a very good thing.
Okay, appreciate it. Anything else on the budget, Mr. Murphy? Now, we'll move on.
I think I have what I need for now.
Thanks, sir. Number nine, discussion on charter commission, Mr. Murphy.
Thanks, I'll do the best I can with this, and I'm going to give my thanks to Megan and Ron for putting this together, my absence, if I was, I was on vacation and training quite a bit these last couple of weeks. But it looks like, what shows here, these amendments that would be voted on, and it looks like any charter amendments would need to be voted on, must be submitted seventeen weeks prior to the general election, since our next general election is November sixth, seventeen weeks, uh, of 2018, seventeen weeks before that, it's July tenth of 2018. So, I guess at this point, we have a little more than a year to put the charter commission together, if we so choose, point them and pass them with whatever they would like to bring forward for both. That's what it sounds like. Megan, did I do an opening?
Yes, the state statute gives seven options. The very last option isn't exactly tied in with, doesn't, if I remember correctly, if the charter commission, the council, a recommendation, and they can adopt it by ordinance, there is a ninety-day waiting period before that ordinance would become effective. There's also a sixty-day window where if the residents wanted to vote on that, they could file a petition with the city, and then it would have to go to a vote. But I believe one through six, it's basically you take it to an election, but number seven, it's specific on, if, I think it has to come from the charter commission, it could possibly be adopted by ordinance.
If there was not a petition, then, or at least a valid petition, then it would not need to go to the voter's register.
Correct, and it's either two thousand voters or five percent. I believe the last election, we had a little over forty-three hundred registered voters, so I think I figured it was about two hundred and twenty, two hundred and fifteen, something like that. If we do get a petition, we would need over two hundred signatures, that would need to be validated.
So, that's, ninety days through sixty days, so it'd be about five months.
I think it's within that first sixty-day period that, no, I think within that first sixty-day period that a petition could be filed, and the ordinance would not, so it'd be three months, but yeah, the ordinance would not be.
Roughly the same timeline.
Did I see from you, Mr. Callston, the assembly of the charter commission would come through the courts and something?
And, and, yes. The, you know, the charter, the, the home rule charter is essentially a constitution that's been granted the authority by the state for us to do it, and it's, and there's, there's some seriousness to that because we are our own legislature then. And so, the, the original charter commission, when I was just pulling, pulling those documents because I didn't have access to them, the original charter commission was, was appointed by the non-judicial district. I don't have the information on if it was seven, fifteen, there's a different number of vacancies that we would potentially have. We would, we would, and so, there's a, there's more of an extended timeline than the, than the seventeen weeks according to getting a petition. You'd actually have to have a charter commission in place, have them make a, get the petition together, provide that petition, and then that petition would have to be available with the question seventeen weeks ahead of time. And, and the, the, I'm, I'm following up a little bit on the, on the court, but we would provide names to the court. Now, in the original, in the original list, there was like twenty-two names that was provided to the court. I see one of them on there was Pat Jacklich, so I can ask her how many, how many people actually were, were appointed, because there's a, there's a, a spread between seven and fifteen. To kind of piggyback on what Megan has just said, and is that there is a, there is a provision for home rule charters of the city of the fourth class, which would be us, ten thousand or less, that the city councils can by ordinance adopt amendments, and then no, after it's been adopted, published, and published, then we would present that to a vote. Doesn't have to go through a commission, and that, but you couldn't present it to a vote sooner than ninety days after the enactment of the ordinance. So, you're still looking at an extended three to four month timeframe, you're, that, that you would have to have all that accomplished. And so, there, and then again, it would have to be approved by the voters of fifty-one percent. Megan is correct in the fact that if we do in fact have a commission that requests by ordinance, the city council, and then we have a four-fifths vote of the city council to approve those amendments and have it all published, they are actually enacted, but if there's a referendum requested within that sixty-day timeframe, then it would have to go on, go on for a further vote. So, I'm actually trying to do a little bit more research on it. I do see a num, or, just on the amount of vacancies that we would have in replacing a commission, and a little bit more of a timeframe to get a better handle on that for you.
Mr. Demers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Whichever process we end up using to potentially amend our charter, it appears like through the league's handbook that if we even want to do it, you know, just by ordinance, as we did in 2008, I believe, we amended the charter, either way, we're out of compliance because the commission has to be standing whether we want it to or not. So, we have to move forward with filling those vacancies, whether we want to or not. So, I would say, no matter what, I would say, yes, we have to figure out how many people we need, but I would start thinking about who should be on that fairly quickly.
So, basically, we're looking at maybe putting some names together and getting those to city administrator?
Mayor.
Mayor.
And then at some point, we would present them to the court. The court would then appoint. If the court doesn't appoint within a certain timeframe, then it's kind of incumbent upon us to do the appointing.
Good place to start. Mr. Vedder, you have something?
Yes, thank you. I think we should review our charter, because the state statute gives us a seven, but our charter may have limited us already into how we can amend our charter. I think we need to at least look at our charter to see if that has taken place.
I haven't looked at it. I don't believe it tells us how to do it, except for Paul's state statute.
I agree with Mr. Vedder. The other nice thing about a charter review is it will give us ideas of how we might want to amend the charter, you know, because we'll give some feedback to our charter commission, we as a city council, about items of our concern and those of some items of their own concern. I think a charter review is a good thing.
Looking through my records, I know I've had a copy of the charter at one point, but I can't locate it, so if you could get a copy of.
It's online. There's a PDF online, too.
It's online, it's online, the website.
I'm old school, I need papers.
Yeah.
Mike?
I just, I wanted to discuss a little bit of the process for recruiting people to serve on the charter. I think that it should have some structure, it shouldn't be just, you know, everyone go through their list of acquaintances or cronies or whoever and forward them to the mayor. I think we should have some outreach and publicity that, that we're going through this, and anybody interested that, that would like can be considered to serve on this charter to come forward and, and maybe, maybe we have a, an application process or something online where people can, I, I just think it should have some structure to it and have some guidelines set, set up ahead of time about, here's how, here's how we're going to set up this list of names to submit to, serve on this charter commission.
Just a heads up for you, tomorrow I'll be sitting in on a webinar about how to leave bills, all their thirty boards and commissions, and the process that they have set up for them, so I might have that in there for you.
Great. Go ahead.
Do we want to set a time, or a due date, I guess, for when we want to submit a slate to the district court? I think sometimes putting a deadline causes action.
I wouldn't mind seeing this on every work session, you know, and with some next step.
I mean, I mean, the, the selection, is there a time when we want to say, we have to have fifteen members for on to submit by?
Well, if you want to do what Mr. Pachininsky recommends, you could go a step ahead of that and say, let's outline what is the selection process. How do we, how do we go about finding those people?
When do we add that for the next work session on the selection process? Sure, maybe Megan will have some new ideas.
So, clarify for me, Mr. Callston, when is basically the best time now to have those submitted by?
I'm going to defer to Megan when it comes to the vote, because I haven't talked to Michelle on how, you know, what she, when she needs the, the actual amendments or questions that would be on the ballot.
I would say it would be around the time that, well, seventeen weeks she would probably follow, we don't have the.
Talking about the commission, to the judge, the names the judges have them appointed.
The, the, well, essentially, the, the appropriate timeframe would be once you've selected a group, then I'll, I'll provide, you know, we'll provide it to the court. I don't have a good handle on when that's going to happen, but the, the judge has, the judge has a couple of weeks to be, to, to make the decisions on, on the appoint, and then if he don't, then the city, it comes back to the city council. Wish I had a better answer for you, but I don't.
Maybe next work session, we can have more of those answers and then go from there. Anybody have anything else on that? Seeing none, appreciate it. Number ten, review of city fees. Megan.
Just bringing forward another group, building permits, planning, zoning, and the one fee that we collect in the ADA. If you guys have any questions, let me know, otherwise, this is just kind of for your review, and I'll try and have a few more in the next work session.
Appreciate it. All right, entertaining motion to adjourn. By Sweden.
Second.
Second, Mr. Demers, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion's carried, meeting is adjourned.
Judge has thirty days.
You know, I haven't, I mean, this is a talk show, because I have a few things.
That friend, Carson, he had it, what, something said it was a condo, but it was actually a twin home because he didn't have the.
But I wanted to touch basically the mayor first, just to.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.